Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. Boy, you never know who's going to come to these things. This is a really good turnout. I'm really delighted with those who decided to come and spend this morning just to listen to me. I mean, gosh, there's other things you could have done. We have amazing turnout faculty and staff. This is, I was just talking with Michelle. You never know. Five years ago, it was the opposite. We had, the front of the auditorium was filled with students and it was really hard to get the attention of faculty and staff. So, I don't know why, but things have turned around. Now, our new goal is to figure out how to appeal to students. Anyway, welcome to our town meeting in the fall. We are always experimenting with ways to try to get through this as painless as possible. So, you will not have slides, in spite of the fact that we have this beautiful, you know, screen sitting up there, which is a special edition, not the one that was designed in the auditorium. As you probably know, the one that was designed here has expired, and so we're looking for a new one. So, this is something we got like at Walmart over the weekend. I want to just go through some of the stuff that has happened since the last town meeting, which was a long time ago. It was actually in February. There's a lot of things going on, so in order to minimize the amount of just report out, we started something new with Michelle and Mark Combs' help. You all have this cool little four-page report to look at. So, I'm going to talk about some of the things in there, and I'm going to talk about some things that are not in there, and we'll see how this goes. So, to begin, a lot of new faces. I'm not sure how many are here, but we have a new class of students here, the class of 2020. So, if there are any students from the class of 2020, would you please rise? Hey! Pretty cool, huh? That's about 5%. That's really great. We also have a number of new faculty members. We had a banner year recruiting new faculty, so if there are new faculty members here who've never been to an Olin Town Meeting before, would you please stand up? Maybe in class or something. There we go. You probably are getting an inkling of just how pleased we are to have you with us. We've been really looking to grow our faculty for a long time. We also have some new staff members. So, rather than going through everybody individually, let me just ask, if you're new to the college and you've not already stood, please stand up. Isn't that always the case? See, the brand-new people don't know what they can get away with yet, so they're here in large numbers, which is really great. Okay, so let me just sort of run through the statistics of where we are so we can get to the Q&amp;A part, which is really more important. First is the financial position in the college. I know that hopefully, not many people here these days lie awake at night worrying about the college's financial situation, but in 2008, we did, and that's when we began these town meetings. So, first of all, our endowment is doing reasonably well. The spending rate last year was at 5.8%, which is just exactly what we had budgeted for. So, we've never had a year where we spent more than we budgeted, and we've never had a year when it's been as high as 6%, which is sort of a red flag at the board level. The preliminary value of the June 30 value of our endowment, all of the investments together, is $353 million. We're a little unhappy about the fact that the return rate on that investment for the past year was at negative 2%. This is a little annoying when you think about your own retirement, how it's mostly come back since 2008, but the college's endowment is struggling. If misery loves company, the recent news report was that Harvard's endowment return rate last year was negative 2% as well. So, apparently, it doesn't help to have a whole lot more money and spend a lot more on investment managers when the market's not great. You just don't do that well. We also, I mean, you have to look at this in historical perspective. We also have had years recently where the return rate was as much as 15% or something more. So, it goes up and down. On the good news side, we also were reviewed last year arm's length by our sort of financial accrediting agency, Moody's Investor Services for our revenue bonds. These are the guys who stand between us and the investors, and they independently offer an opinion about how healthy the college is as an investment opportunity. So, should you put your money there, are these guys going to go away? And we got a very good report from them. They said that we've maintained our high rating at A2, and they wrote, and I'll just quote this, "The A2 rating is supported by Olin's market niche as a small engineering college with solid student demand, high resources per student, improving operating performance and revenue diversity, and the ability to increase student revenue over time." The rating also considers the college's high debt burden, higher-than-typical endowment spending, debt structure-related risks, and limited philanthropic support." So, there they have the positive and the negative, and they still came out with a good A2 rating. So, if you're really interested in the graph with the red line and the blue line, I think we gave it to you in this report, so we don't have to put it up on the board. And on the other hand, you still get a chance to see what the graph looks like. Okay, moving on, development, family, and alumni relations. As you know, in May of this year, we welcomed Kitty Didion as our new vice president. You want to stand up for just a second, so that if they haven't seen you, they will now. She's new to Boston, has spent many years in Washington, DC, and I got to know her before she came for the last several years at the National Academy of Engineering, where she had worked a long time on engineering education and on women's issues. You don't have to explain to her what engineering is, and you don't have to explain to her what the national scene is like in engineering education. She's already a recognized expert at that. We also, last month, just now, you know, a few weeks ago, added Alana Boyd as our director of development. Alana, you want to stand up for a second? So, we have some new faces in this group. In last fiscal year, the total giving received was over $8 million. This is really a high watermark for the school, but this includes a $6 million grant from the Kern Family Foundation. We talked a little bit about this last February, and I'll talk more about what it means in a few minutes. This also includes almost $2 million in other contributions to the college, which is nearly our target for this past year. So, things stayed pretty steady in pretty much what we had planned. The alumni participation rate rose to 79% this year from last year's 78%, which is amazing. This is the highest participation rate in the country. It's a vote of confidence. I think personally, it's an indication that Olin is changing lives. I think people pay attention to things that matter to them, and when Olin brings people in and spends four years with them, you know, after the four-year sleepover that students think sometimes that Olin is, they tend to remember that. This is, we've made a mark here. And the apparent participation rate fell to 55% from what was before 62%, but it's still among the highest in the country. The Alumni Merit Scholarship Endowed Fund, remember that? The group of alumni who are really interested in trying to restore the full merit scholarship raised a total of $103,547 last year. So, we have a ways to go to get to what will probably need to be north of $200 million to restore everything, but they're working on it. Okay, admission. We have a new admission team this year, led by Emily Roper-Dotson, whom you've all seen now for the past year, and her new team brought in a class size of 83. Amazing class, really is, by almost all measures that you can see, completely in line with what we've seen in the past in terms of the quality in every dimension. But this year, in addition, 11% of the class are underrepresented minorities compared with 6% in the year before. It's nearly a doubling in one cycle. What do you think of that? And of course, the class of 2020 is 48% female compared with 46% the previous year. That's hovering around 50% for several years now. It's quite stable. We just couldn't be more pleased with the way the admission team is off and running. Now, in terms of academic life, there've been changes too. The academic leadership team has changed around. This includes, for example, Professor Rob Martello, assuming the role of Associate Dean for Curriculum and Academic Programs, a role he's taking over from Professor Jessica Townsend. Jessica is shifting her role to Associate Dean for External Engagement and Initiatives, a role she's taking over from Professor Lynn Stein, who's returning to the faculty on special assignment. In addition, we have a very strong group of new faculty members, which I just asked to stand a few minutes ago. This is a high watermark, I think, for us in recent years, recruiting five, I believe, new faculty members in one year. Given the amount of energy and thoroughness and depth that Olin uses to screen faculty members, that's been a real challenge, and we proved that it's possible to do this with outstanding results this year. So, we're really pleased with the outcomes. Among the five that we brought in is one face that's not new, okay? Professor John Stolk, who is returning to Olin from SMU in Texas. John, will you just stand up for a second? Can't tell you how pleased we are to have you back. You know, we recruit people from a really rich candidate pool from all over. I think this may be the first time that we've recruited a director of a center with an endowed chair and tenure at another major research university to Olin. So, we're really grateful to have you back again, John. In addition, academic affairs lost one of our stars last year, Allison Black, who was Assistant Dean of Student Affairs, accepted the position of Class Dean at Wellesley College, which was a significant advancement in her professional development. So, she's off and running at this new position, and of course, leaves a little bit of a hole in our heart and a hole in our program as we work to fill that. Now, the collaboratory, you know, our outward-facing activity to try to deal with more than 600 universities who've been through here since 2010, this completed two very successful weeks of summer programming in June with a record turnout for the first week, followed by a week of experimental workshops that included covering, convening long-term Olin partner institutions like the University of Illinois, the University of Texas at El Paso, INSPER, our partner in Brazil, Amunabad University from India, and I think we have a couple of our partners from India here. Would you like to just stand up for a second so people can recognize that you're here? And our budding or emerging new partner in England, this institution, this is called NMITE, which is a placeholder name at the moment. It's in Hereford. So, that's the new activities that are going on in collaboratory. And of course, on campus, there's an awful lot of innovative curriculum development that happens over the summer, and in this particular year, four interdisciplinary faculty teams are working on curriculum innovation projects supported by the Innovation Fund, so this connects right back to our development effort. Projects touch on curricular assessment, integrated teaching teams, critical reflection, which is something I think is absolutely transformational, and of course, the intersection of computing and biological science. I say this about critical reflection because I'm sitting in so many different boards and panels now where folks are worried about lifelong learning, and I'm absolutely convinced lifelong learning is not possible without development of a very sincere and internalized pattern, habit of critical reflection on what you've learned, where you are in life, how does it make sense out of the world around you. And Olin emphasizes this more than any school I know, and I just can't tell you how proud I am of that fact. In addition, we have the team developing the second course in the quantitative engineering analysis stream. You know, this is the rethinking of the techie, hard-science-and-math component of Olin's curriculum to complement the design program, which is already, I think, world-beating, and that's going extremely well. So, that's what's going on in the academic program in a nutshell. There's been a little bit of change in the senior leadership in the school. After nearly 17 years of dedicated service to Olin, Vice President for Operations and Chief Information Officer Joanne Cassuth has left, and I think she's now pursuing other positions. Joanne made an enormous impact on the school in lots of different areas, from designing the IT Operations Program from the blueprints as the college went up, to leading operations for a while. She was for a while the interim VP for Development, did a lot of things. Whenever it absolutely, positively must be done, you just call Joanne, and she gets it done. So, she's off now doing new things, and we're going to be developing a search for a person to fill that spot very soon. Now, most of what I want to say from here on is about what the Kern Grant was about and what is this network-of-networks thing that you hear occasionally. And so, I'm going to tell you a story of many different tentacles that are out there in an evolving opportunity, which is not entirely clear at this point, but could be transformational for lots of things. So, in the past few months, Jim Rohn, who is the president of the Kern Family Foundation, he and I have worked very close in shaping a narrative that positions Olin very well for influencing change in undergraduate education within engineering, but in the last six months, possibly well beyond engineering to most of higher education. Now, this sounds kind of ridiculous for a tiny school like Olin, but as Margaret Mead said, never underestimate the power of a small group of committed people to make change in the world, because that's the only thing it ever has. Now, this involves emphasizing the benefits of what our community has been doing for a long time, just making sure other people know about it. Benefits of design thinking, of intrinsic motivation, of teamwork, experiential learning, entrepreneurial mindset, as an essential supplement to content knowledge and academic skills, really, for all academic disciplines. Now, the initial efforts here have emerged from sort of test runs, oral presentations based on this idea, without having any, you know, papers written with lots of references, and just to see how many arrows do you get in your back? If you stand in front of a respected group and you make these kinds of comments, what happens? And this happened first at Stanford on May 25th, then it happened at the Aspen Forum for the Future of Higher Education with Jim Plummer on June 15th, and then the National Science Foundation asked for a special lecture on July 12th, and then a panel discussion on the need to integrate learning and arts and humanities into STEM education at the National Academy of Sciences on July 28th. And what happened in each of those conversations was an amazing resonance with the audience. People almost come out of the woodwork so far with endorsement for this idea. So, just for example, the talk at the National Science Foundation was a standing-room-only event. They kept bringing in a few extra chairs as people showed up. It was a one-hour talk, and we left 10 minutes for questions. Forty minutes later, when the questions just couldn't be accommodated, we eventually cut it off because people had to go to other meetings. And of all the questions that came up, there was only one that had any kind of unhappiness about the message that we heard. It's quite amazing. So, the narrative has power. I'm quite convinced of that. And one of the interesting things about it, coming from me, coming from Olin, you know, there is no New York Times front-page quote that President of Olin College says X, okay? That's not going to happen. If the President of Stanford says this, I mean, then you see news all over the place. The President of Harvard. And the fact that even though Olin is too tiny to show up in a lot of the rankings that you see these days, the message that we're coming forward with is getting traction and is getting resonance can only be because there's power in the message itself. That's what gives me confidence that this actually is gaining traction. Now, this narrative positioning Olin really happens to be well-aligned with some recent data that came out, which I'd highly encourage you to have a look at if you haven't already, from the Gallup Organization. You know, Gallup is that group that polls people. This is an election year, so you're going to hear probably a lot from Gallup. They have a division of Gallup that's concerned about education, and the fellow who is leading that effort is named Brandon Bustead. I met him a couple of years ago in San Francisco. He has the largest dataset in history. I think it's over a million people, together with Purdue University, to measure quantitatively what matters in higher education. What can you measure in terms of lives of alumni years after they have graduated from the school? And one of the things that he's found is basically mindset matters more than anything else, certainly more than content, more than the eliteness of the school, even more than the major that you had. So, how does this show up? Well, two things that he said, I think, are important. By the way, Brandon Bustead has agreed to be the keynote speaker for the President's Council here next month, so he's going to be on campus if you're interested in it. And the most accessible article on this that I've seen so far is a cover article on Trusteeship Magazine, which is the current issue, so you can probably get that in the library, or you can get it online, too. Anyway, the two things that he said, he said, "Look, if you look at the well-being broadly defined, it's not just the salary and a job, but also includes, you know, whether you've had a stable family life, whether you have avoided chronic disease, whether you have avoided trouble with the law, and so on." So, it's a broad metric of mid-career people who've graduated from college, and you ask them a lot of questions about their college experience and try to look for correlations. What he found is there's two things that just jump off the page. And these won't surprise you, not at Olin. Number one is you had a mentor at some point in your college career. What is a mentor? Mentor is some, is a person who lies somewhere on a yardstick between a parent on one end and a teacher on the other end. Somebody like a high school basketball coach that, you know, you get to a point in your life where you need to change jobs, you want to talk to somebody about it who knows you, you know this person cares about you, they know you well enough that you trust their advice, a mentor. Number two, you had the opportunity to apply what you've learned in class in a real-world context while you're still a student, okay? And about a semester length of that is what he found. If you have those two things, from what his data shows, I believe it's many multiples of likelihood of having positive life outcomes than if you haven't. I think it's 17 times. It's like, not 17%, this is like 1,700%. This just comes right out of the data. The other thing he found out, so, okay, if this is so powerful, what fraction of kids in America today have that? Do you know what he found? 3%. 3% of kids in America have those two experiences in college, and those, that small fraction of people have a disproportionately high likelihood of positive outcomes. By the way, he also found, by colleges and universities, those universities that we know the most frequently because they're at the top of the U.S. News poll and so forth, they're the least likely to produce graduates with those experience, way at the bottom. On the other hand, among those colleges that produce the best outcomes are, for example, historically black colleges and universities. They devote a lot of time and energy to mentoring individual students, and it shows up in the data. So, it's a quite interesting dataset. I think it's, the bottom line is, it matters a lot more what your mindset is and your set of personal beliefs about your own abilities and your own strengths and weaknesses than your ability to integrate by parts or know where the capital of Nebraska is, okay? Life is more than just knowing facts, and you're hearing this from the corporation, corporate world as well. Okay. So, this evolving narrative, by the way, has also gotten the attention of the Mellon Foundation, the Lemelson Foundation, Lockheed Martin Corporation, which is now driving the National Engineering Forum, and the Board of Higher Education and Workforce at the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine. There's a very active discussion going on with all of these groups. I don't know where this is going, okay? I can't tell you. All I can tell you is Olin is onstage in a way that we have never been onstage before, and there are people taking notes, and there are folks with checkbooks that are looking for making investments. So, something in the next 12 months is likely to open for us that we will have an influence bigger than we've had before. Okay. What are the consequences of that? Well, one of the consequences are, number one, we are not talking about Olin doing something different than what we've already done. We're just explaining what Olin has learned from our own experimentation and sharing that with others, and the message of the culture that Olin has developed and what's going on in our classrooms and what's going on with our alumni is itself opening doors. People want to know more. They want to know, how can we spread this? How can we, you know, is everything that Olin does necessary, or can you get a lot of this from doing a small fraction of it? That's the frontier. But still, what I can see as an impact on Olin is there's going to be more demand, there's going to be more interest in what we're doing, there's going to be more people knocking on the door. We're going to have to be more prepared for dealing with that than we have been in the past. This has led to some thinking in several of us here about structuring Olin for this bigger impact. We're calling it, you know, at the moment, Olin 2.0. So, we imagine that we're making a change in the school that's not an incremental change, but we're leaping ahead and imagining in five years' time, Olin is going to be playing this other role. What is it going to take to position us so that we can sustain what we're doing and make an impact? So, this comprehensive review is underway, and it's already begun in some ways. Some of this is not new. For example, we've been doing, a couple of years ago, we decided that we needed a marketing and communications operation. We'd never had one before, right? That's sort of the leading edge of Olin 2.0. Why would you need a marketing and communication if your whole purpose in life is to teach, you know, 350 students on this little oval campus? You'd need them. Well, turns out influencing others is an important part of it. There's been some change in financial affairs. And if you're in the academic area, I'm sure you're aware, the faculty manual has been redesigned completely. In fact, the whole concept of what it means to be a successful faculty member at Olin has been redesigned by the faculty. One of the remarkable things about that, you know, I wasn't in the room, and that's probably why it was redesigned really well, but one of the things that we found is that it had a unanimous faculty vote. Do you know how rare that is? I mean, this is like the fourth university that I've been at. I don't think I've ever been at a faculty anywhere that's had a unanimous faculty vote on even where to have lunch, much less change the faculty manual. That's really remarkable, and we're getting lots of requests to see this faculty manual from other universities, because I think this is the key that opens the door to change at lots of places. If they just did that, if they just opened the door on the faculty manual, they would enable the creative forces among their own faculty and their own circumstances to make major change. So, that's underway. The admission program has been completely redesigned now. As you know, the library is quite different than it was a couple of years ago. Maybe you'll recognize that as well. The whole curriculum innovation process has been redesigned. Development, Family, and Alumni Relations, of course, is now on the leading edge and making some changes. This summer, dining services is different, maybe you've noticed. We're now in discussion stages of extending the Olin 2.0 effort to other areas, like the collaboratory, which is just now beginning to take a deep breath and think about what do these new opportunities mean. The information technology operation is up for complete comprehensive review, new strategic plan, so computing at Olin in all of the administrative and academic ways is likely to face some interesting change. The whole student life program, as Vin and Rayanne have been talking about, may be rethought going forward. The operations program for the school, as Joanne has left, and I'm working with the Board of Trustees to make some, you know, Board of Trustees 2.0 decisions, structure, composition, membership. Who should be on the Board of Trustees of a college that's changing education in America? Are they there now? Where are they? And the President's Council, what's the role of the President's Council in two or three years? So, this is a significant realignment of what Olin's doing in response to what appears to be exploding opportunities on the horizon. And if you're still awake, I'll be glad to devote the rest of the time to answering questions, because I know there are some people in the audience who know what the answers are. Okay? Okay. Come on, this is Olin. This is the, this is the main show, is the Q&amp;A. Yes?
I'm going to take advantage of people not raising their hands right now. I'm curious how you're co-curricular with Ray- I'm curious how your co-curricular with Rayanne is going on ethics and civil discourse and what's happening with that.
Thank you. You may remember the last of these town meetings, we had some questions at the end, which were about values, about Olin's values, about personal values, and they really were questions that I believe deserved longer conversations, not something that we could do in an auditorium. And so Rayanne has agreed to join me in leading an informal, essentially co-curricular on various nights in the dining hall, and anybody's welcome to join us. Now, I'm really not very well-prepared to answer this, because I've only attended one of them, okay, because of my travel schedule. Rayanne, as I'm sure, attended more. I think it's a conversation, it's not a course, we don't have a syllabus, there are no lectures, it's, we can't tell what the topic will be for the next week until we end this week's topic, because it's a continuation of where we were this week. I felt very good about this. Maybe Rayanne would like to weigh in, if we can get her a microphone.
So we've had two meetings so far. The first, Rick was able to join us, and then last week was our second meeting. So I think so far, so good. Is anybody here from, that has joined us the last couple of weeks? Oh, there's Ian. He's giving it the thumbs up. Yeah, we've had a really good time. Rick explained exactly kind of how we're proceeding, and my plan is, so you should, I'm going to send a Carpe out today. Our goal is to just sort of send a flare up each week and invite whomever would like to join us, in addition to the folks that are signed up to join us, but we've got a good hearty group of seven to 10 folks so far each week, and good conversations based on what people want to talk about related to values and ethics and things of the like. So, so far, so good. I've asked a few participants individually what they think, and everyone seems to think the conversation is fun so far. So I'm enjoying it.
That's good. Thank you. Other questions? Oh, yes.
Just curious, you, well, okay. You mentioned that the faculty manual had been changed, and I was just curious what type of change is, in a broad, general terms.
Basically, it's a process we went through to define what is expected and what is success for a faculty member at Olin as opposed to a generic faculty member. The generic faculty member in higher education gets measured with three thermometers: teaching, research, and service. And each institution actually, though you cannot find it in their faculty manual, actually has what temperatures are expected on each one of those thermometers. And it's generic across all higher education. That rubric has nothing to do with the institution itself. So in a collaborative way, the faculty and the administration work together to say, what is expected of an Olin faculty member? What is, and instead of separate buckets of teaching, research, and service, for an Olin faculty member, we said the expectations and why people come to Olin are to develop students, build and sustain the college, and have impact outside of the college, which provides a much richer playing field for faculty and students and staff to collaborate in. And the important is that it's connected to what the mission of the institution is. Other universities could think about adapting this general rubric by thinking about what is special about their mission, as opposed to the generic teaching, research, and service. So it was great that we passed that legislation, and it's really over in the last two years, where we, now we've had 13 reappointment and promotion cases, and we're getting to learn what we actually did. So, which is, which is even more informative process, and I'm even more convinced that what we did was significant.
Others? One in the back there. The microphone is on the way.
You alluded to this in your talk, but suppose some, another university which has much fewer faculty per student comes and says, "Well, we'd really like to do what Olin's doing, but it's just too expensive. There's no way we can scale that to, you know, 10,000 students or 1,000 students just in every year in engineering." What do you think are the most important things that you would tell them, "Well, here's what you should really do to get the best results for a reasonable investment and one that you could actually do"?
That's a really good question. We could spend several days talking about that, and the real experts are sitting in the audience, who are the faculties, faculty who are doing it. But I can tell you what I often say in this, some of it's a little bit facetious at the beginning, because I've seen real change happen in large universities with a 20 to 1 student-faculty ratio and with five or 10 PhD students per faculty member as the norm. So the first, the first thing I would say is that if you want to improve the quality of undergraduate education on your large state university campus, you should consider two things. Ask the faculty members to sit through the courses that they assign their students to take. Okay? It's one of those Yogi Bear things, it's amazing what you can see by looking. Why is that? Because coherence of the curriculum, how the pieces fit together, how you make sense of what you're learning, is almost entirely missing in major, large universities, at least what I've seen. And there's some exceptions, but the large rule. Number two, ask new faculty members when they arrive to teach together in teams. Don't just give them a syllabus and send them off to teach their course at the graduate level with nobody paying any attention. Particularly teams involving people from other disciplines. So what you really have in common is the learning process and not the technical material. That is a game changer. I believe Olin does that. Now, we might not do it exactly the way you're thinking, but you know we have this summer program where faculty members teach their subject to other faculty members in a compressed format for a week or so. You know, gene splicing for dummies, this is how we do it at Olin. That gives everyone else a window into what's going through students' heads. So coherence is a big deal. The other thing about teaching together in teams, it's almost, you know, implicit in the way Olin makes assignments for people as they come in, and the way Olin does a lot of teaching, that that experience happens. Is that the Olin experience? No. Okay, Olin is completely different from that, and I understand that. But those two things are fundamental to the kind of change that we're talking about. I think that mindset is a big deal. We have some faculty members who've been studying this and can say a lot more about this than me. How do you define mindset? Well, it's real, it can be measured, it can be taught, and the impact is documented. There is work, for example, by Carol Dweck at Stanford, who's been talking about growth mindset in education for 25 years. She won the Atkinson Prize of the National Academy of Science last April or May for the work that she's been doing in this area, and she has a book out called Mindset. And if you don't have one, I would recommend that you get one. It's not an expensive book, it's an easy read. It gives you a good overview of the power of mindset to change the way people's lives unfold. So rather than going through a long conversation about the different kinds of mindset and the difference between mindset and personality, and there are others more qualified than me, let me just say a little bit about what I'm going to be doing on October 13th. Some of you will remember, he's a member of the President's Council now, Mel Ramey. Does anybody remember him? Can you raise your hands? Yeah, Mel came and did a sabbatical leave here a few years ago. He was an African American, I think he was the first African American faculty member at UC Davis, where I was an undergraduate. In fact, I was in his first freshman class on the first year that he came there to teach. He was my mentor, my advisor. He's been my mentor for many, many years, okay, more than I'd like to count. He's terrific. I'm going there, back to Davis, on October 13th, because I got a letter from the chancellor, and Davis is naming the entryway to the large Student Center at UC Davis after Mel Ramey. Being one of his early, you know, students, I got the opportunity to review the case for making this change, letters from prior alumni, from other colleagues, what is it that Mel does? And I can tell you, the brief summary of Mel's impact over 40 years is that hopeful faculty members spread hope among their students, and cynical faculty members spread cynicism. Okay? Now, Mel has spread hope through so many generations, and it's, and you can hear it in the letters, and it's, he's changed lives, that this is the reason why they're changing the name of this building on their campus. By the way, Mel never taught a course called Hope 101. If you looked at the syllabus for his structural mechanics course, it doesn't have any special readings or extra, you know, course material devoted to hope. You learn hope because Mel is a personality who spreads hope in his way of looking at people and his way of dealing with things. As far as I can tell, nothing in life is reason to consider yourself a victim, everything is an inconvenience. And he mentioned this to his kids for generations. Mel changed my life along the way. Obviously, I wouldn't be doing this. So what I learned from Mel is every time you walk into the classroom and you pick up a piece of chalk, you're not just teaching calculus or physics or engineering, you're teaching mindset, too. And it's happening, this is what Gallup is measuring in their data as well. It's not something that is tied to a course, it transcends courses, it's deeper than that. And you only get it by total immersion with other people. So if you're at a large state university, like the University of California, you can teach mindset, and you can get at the heart of what Olin is doing, it's just that right now, it's not recognized, it's not endorsed. My message this year, and I'm working with about 10 or 15 university presidents at other places, is I hope they will take the opportunity, in their convocation speeches in the fall and their commencement addresses in the spring, to embrace the responsibility in higher education to not just teach content, knowledge, and skill, but to take seriously the mission of shaping the mindset of the next generation as well. So that's what they're hearing. Okay? Now, probably we could have an hour or two conversation with the faculty in the back who are in the classroom every day, dealing with the difficulties of making this happen, and we would have a much richer and probably more accurate picture of what's going on. But thank you for the question. Boy, this is a disappointing crowd today. Okay, here we go.
You talked a lot about, like, ramping up the sharing of the Olin curriculum. How do you imagine student involvement in that in the future?
Oh, that's a really good question. I'll give you like a one-minute answer, and then I'll ask Jessica if she can give a deeper description. I think frankly, the experience that we had in Sao Paulo, Brazil, with our partner there, where a number of students, maybe four or five per semester, went down on a kind of unique study away, taught us a lot. Students can be enormously influential in developing and in demonstrating and even teaching faculty members at other institutions about the Olin learning culture. So I'm going to leave it at that and ask Jessica to tell you how this works.
Yeah, I would, just a couple examples of things that have happened recently. I think one way for us to think about it is, how are Olin's students change agents for what's happening at Olin? And so I think trying to answer that question, and we've been doing a bunch of experiments over the last couple of years, where students have been more directly and explicitly involved in the creation of new courses, having a group of students who have been involved with redesigning the library space, with some of the other teaching spaces, having students involved in the creation of the quantitative engineering analysis stream, you know, how can we put students at Olin in that position, in that role of change agent? And then I think the question is, once, you know, when we're doing that at Olin, how do we take that outside with us? And it was great that we could experiment by having four students down at UTEP over a couple of semesters, because that was sort of happening in parallel. They were coming back and saying, "Hey, we're feeling pretty empowered about what we did down there, we want to be doing more of this here." So actually, in my new role, I'm, one of the things I'm really interested in is bolstering that experience for students at Olin and putting you more firmly in that role and creating many more opportunities for that. So we're, I'll give a plug, we're running a co-curricular Mondays at 12:30 in the mezzanine of the dining hall, that's very much about this exact thing, and so we'd love to have more conversations about that. But I think going forward with our future partnerships, having student, Olin students involved in those in explicit ways are things that we're trying to figure out how to do that, so.
That's good. There was another hand up here, there we go. Mic is on its way.
Okay, so in my perspective, as albeit not a particularly involved student with the administration and interfacing there, there seems to be a perception among Olin students that administration and students have different goals and/or those goals aren't communicated as readily as, say, curriculum goals between students and faculty, and that interface is a lot closer there. And I don't know if that's myself not seeking it, me not seeking it out, or if there is like something that I don't know about. But I'm curious, what do you think we can do to try to make the goals, the, I guess, the communication about goals and the direction of where things are going between students and administration, similar to the way that curriculum goals are shaped by students and faculty together?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I think you've hit on something that's been on my mind for a long time. The connections between the student body and the rest of the college, except for the classroom teachers, who happen to be in the same room with the students, are not as strong as you would expect for a community that's as small and that has this kind of bonding. I've struggled with different ways to do them for years. What I did was go and deliberately sit in the dining hall at lunch every day that I'm here, at a table that's empty, so that you wouldn't feel like you're interrupting me. Okay? Come in, he's a lonely guy over there, why don't we just go and sit with him? And there's a few students who've done that, and in fact, some of them are now alumni and they come back, and we're still bonded because of our lunches over the years. Largely, it doesn't work. Largely, people just say, "That's the president over there." Probably there's some other reason that he's sitting there, I'm not going to go. That didn't work. We've had students in our homes, in my home personally, and it's been difficult in the last year or two because of the travel that's gone through the ceiling, but we're working on that, we'll get an opportunity this year for that as well. But it's got to go beyond that. And I think Ian Hill has thought about this a fair amount from the student government side as well. He might want to comment on this as well. I would like to ask for students to think about how we can do a better job of interacting. I mean, it's not just about the big goals of where the school is going, it's almost any goal that where the school is going, there's not enough communication between students and the rest of us. And I'd like to know ways we can do that, and I'm sure Rayanne has some ideas about this as well. So let me challenge you to take that on as a project and try to send us thoughts and ideas about what you think might be useful, and we'll try some experiments. Ian?
Sure. So we have, we have definitely thought a lot about how to communicate between the student body and the administration. In our restructuring a few years ago, we decided, all right, how do we, how do we solve specific problems that, and that come to our attention as student leaders, and how do we make sure that the administration is aware or that they know that they can reach out to us when they have questions about, "Oh, we're thinking about doing this thing, how would students react to it?" And so we have created a structure where we have a student who is a liaison to each of the administrative departments, and so that's just at least one connection of, if we, if we hear a concern, we know exactly who to route it to and who to talk to in each department. And on the other end, the leaders of each, like, leaders of marketing or DFOR or operations, student life, all those kinds of departments can also turn around to their student liaison and say, "Hey, what makes sense to the students with this particular issue?" It doesn't, however, answer your concern about larger goals. Because we're off, this is often on like a one-off basis or having one-on-one meetings with these, between these two people. And so how to change like an entire student body perception of the goals of the college and entire administration perception of the goals of the college, that ends up being pretty different and, or pretty challenging to do, and I, I'd say it somewhat comes down to what each group sees in their day-to-day life. So students were in the classroom, working on projects, we have concerns about homework and what we're eating for dinner tonight, or, I mean, there are things that are very, very different concerns in day-to-day life. And we're used to having things change on a dime, because we're doing projects at a very rapid pace, we're trying to get as much experience as we can in a short period of time, whereas administrators, who are sitting in MyLus Hall and doing their work at their desk most of the day, they don't see what's going on in the classroom. desk most of the day, they don't see what's going on in the classroom. And the administration has to deal with all of the policies that are at the college, the laws that govern everything that we do. And so they're under a bunch of different constraints that students really don't see. And so there's often a bit of a tension between the expectations of students saying, why can't the administration react more quickly? And the administration's saying, but wait, we have all these things we have to do, we have to go through proper processes to make sure everyone's safe, they have all these other concerns that make changes and expectations a little bit difficult. And so I think, I agree that we should have definitely a conversation about what, how does the administration perceive the goals of the college versus the students? And then once we maybe have some measurements of how those are different, then we can go ahead with how we might try to align those or create a better understanding between those two demographics on campus.
Okay, thank you. And Rayanne, would you like to weigh in as well? While they're bringing the mic to her, let me just point out, there's some validity, there's some independent validation of the need for stronger communication between those of us who are, let's say, over 25 and those of us who are not, by the composition in this audience. The absence of the student body, I think, is a pretty strong indicator that we could be doing better at bringing people into the conversation. Rayanne?
I'll just add one thing, and I think the conversation about development of goals is definitely one step, as Ian has articulated, further than we may be ready to talk about at this moment, which is a very important one, though. And I think it's not dissimilar to the classroom engagement conversation that was well-laid out. You go to class every day, you interact every day with people. We also have to be getting out there and interacting. So just a couple of basic examples, and I think we all try to do this in our different spaces. Vin and I had a senior class meeting last night where we invited all the seniors to come, have some FaceTime, have a conversation about senior year, things like that. You will readily certainly find me and many members of my team out there. I go to Core every week. So it's not dissimilar. We also need to be getting out into the spaces that you're in, as well as inviting you into our spaces in order to develop the relationships that form the basis of the trust that needs to be there in order to work together on thing, broad-picture things like goals and things like that. And I think, I can certainly see ways we've changed that over the last several years, and we will continue to do so with your good advice and our own expertise and partnering on doing that, so.
Okay. Just in the goals thing, just add one thing. Olin is unlike other colleges, I think people recognize that. All you need to do is to go to the founding precepts on the website to understand why. So Olin was designed for a very specific purpose. The Olin Foundation invested $500 million in order to make that happen, and it has a lot to do with influencing change in education elsewhere. That actually is a goal we can't change. That's in granite, that was part of the conditions for accepting the money to start the school to begin with, and Olin has been doing a lot in that area. What we can talk about is balance between how much we invest in this versus in that, and remember that our students are always our highest priority. So those are the kinds of things that I think should be good alignment up and down the entire institution. I think we have time for maybe one more question? Yes? Miranda?
Thank you. I was just noticing, this is probably a student affairs question, so back to you, Ann, but the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I'm curious about what kind of initiatives will be put forth by that and what kind of work you'll be doing.
I'll start, but I certainly also want to point out that the lovely and talented Sarah Hindren is the chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I'll start by saying our first point of business is to recruit and appoint the newly-created position of Director of Diversity and Inclusion and Title IX Coordinator, which I think, hopefully, students certainly, I've tried to make very aware of this. But, so that's where we're starting from right now, we're in the thick of that process. So I'm going to pass it to Sarah in case she has other things she wants to add to that.
Sure, thanks for the question. We know that our work is welcomed and has a lot of background behind it at this school and a lot of political will and buy-in, and we're happy about that. And we're doing, we're starting to map both very small experiments on the ground, kinds of short-term, concrete changes we can make, and then also try to think about what a far more ambitious and structural change, set of changes at Olin would look like. And of course, for that, we'll need lots of help and advice from all of you. I mean, I can tell you that we, you know, we just sent the search committee 15 professional and paraprofessional organizations that deliberately target underrepresented groups in engineering and technology for immediate distribution of our listings this year, stuff like that. We also generated some tweaks to the language to make sure we're being as inclusive as possible in implicit and explicit ways on our job postings. So I mean, we've had three meetings or something, but that's like, you know, we're doing very concrete things like that, and then also these larger things. Thanks.
Okay, well, it's just about 12 o'clock, so I want to thank everybody for coming, and I hope you have a terrific semester. Thank you.